We have a petitioner's public hearings correspondence piece, having had our presentation, and we will start with our public hearing. And we have a public hearing before the mayor to receive comments on a proposed ordinance modifying Chapter 160 of the City of Oneonta's municipal code entitled Historic Preservation. This ordinance was laid on January 21st, 2025, and approved by the Common Council on February 4th of 2025. Do we have anyone here who would like to speak about this, in this public hearing? Seeing no hands, I'm going to say that that public hearing is closed, and we will move into our petitioner's section. And we all know the rules at this point, so I'm just going to simply say if anybody would like to speak, this is your opportunity. Have we anybody who would like to speak? Seeing no hands, we're going to close the petitioner's section. Bonnie, do we have correspondence?
I have none.
We have no correspondence. And our boards, commissions, and task forces, no report here. Len, Councilmember Carson, can you give us a sense of when housing might want to make a presentation?
Next month.
Next month? Thank you. All right, we'll move into our committee reports, beginning with our Community Wellness Committee and Councilmember LaFari Shu.
Okay, I'll make it loud and brief. So we met, and it was Councilmember Mosher Campoli, Councilmember McHugh, and myself. We had a guest from Southern Tier Connect who talked to us about the work of that organization. And then we talked as a group about what we would like to accomplish in 2025, and just kind of the focus of the group. We've also changed our meeting time from the first Wednesday at 6:00 to the first, second Tuesday at 5:30.
3:00.
Second Tuesday at 5:30. It's in my phone, I would have to do the math. And then we went over the tobacco licensing legislation that we're working on, that we've been working on for several months, with the city clerk who was in attendance, because their office would have to process applications for that. Some applications were presented, and some tweaking to the words, and so that will come back to the committee, we're not finished with that yet. And then we discussed, we had a kind of a report, I guess, from Councilmember Mosher Campoli on some of the meetings and groups that she's been in attendance for, and the work that they're doing. That was it. Second Tuesday, 5:30 going forward.
Are we any questions? Comments? Yes?
Just a very quick question. Could you just briefly describe what Southern Tier Connect does as an organization?
Yes, could I defer to Elaine? She actually works there.
I actually work for Southern Tier Connect.
Yeah.
And so I had invited them to come and share some data that they had put together about housing and the impact on health. But Southern Tier Connect is an agency that provides care coordination for individuals with developmental disabilities. So, and they are a sister company with Springbrook, that a lot of community members are more familiar with.
Further questions? Comments? All right, in that case, thank you very much. And we'll move on to our Legislative Committee and Councilmember Carson.
Thank you, Mayor. We met February 10th, and our meeting was contained to about 50 minutes. We had some scheduling conflicts between committee members and staff, so we kept it to about 50 minutes. But we're going to actually have Part Two on the 25th of this month, so we can continue on, so we're going to have an additional meeting. But we did have an opportunity to listen from a property owner here in the City of Oneonta. He owns multiple parcels, and was just providing some of his personal perspective on the communication and relationship between property owners and city staff with regards to fees, to administrative fees. We also listened from Fire Chief Knapp with regards to unnecessary alarms, and that'll be one of the main topics, February 25th. I'm not projecting, I'm not loud?
No. Surprising.
Surprising, isn't it? So Fire Chief Knapp and Stephen Early, our code enforcement officer, will be bringing back more information to the February 25th meeting. So, that's about it.
Do we have any questions? Yes?
Yeah, Lan, a question. I feel like I'm shouting at you now, but you guys were talking about, with the fire chief, about whether it should be by building versus property? Is that...
We were talking about unnecessary alarms, that was one part of that discussion. We wanted some background information about approximately, how many properties are we talking about? And the number of alarms that we're talking about? I think they could generalize the number of alarms, I think 480 or 480, somewhere in there was a number. So I think we just wanted some more background information before we have further discussion.
Okay.
Better to get more data.
All right. Okay, thanks.
Further questions? Thank you very much, Len. And we'll move on to Councilmember Walsh Russo, and you'll report on the Finance and HR.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So we discussed several items that I moved to the consent, that we moved to the consent agenda that had been already budgeted, including the purchase of a police interceptor for the police department. And we also, we discussed moving two items for open discussion that you'll see, Motion Number Nine, which is in regards to the reforestation grant program that includes forestation up within city limits that we'll discuss further. And then we also had a discussion that will continue today with the entire council on the proposed occupancy tax for the city.
Anything for Cecilia? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, we are moving directly from there to our approval of warrants with Motion Number One, that the Common Council approves the warrants totaling $1,68,460.82, and that the same be placed on the Finance Director's desk for payment as presented to. Do I have a motion to approve? I've got Elaine followed by Len. And we'll take that.
Sure. Councilmember Mosher Campoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh?
Aye.
Councilmember LaFari Shu?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Forster Rothbard?
Yes.
And Councilmember Masson is absent.
All right, very good. Now taking us to the consent agenda, which include motions two through seven. And do I have a motion to approve? I've got Shannon, followed by Elaine, and it is the consent agenda. But...
Councilmember Mosher Campoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh?
Aye.
Councilmember LaFari Shu?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Forster Rothbard?
Aye.
Very good. That takes us neatly to the city administrators' report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief, and loud. We, as the mayor mentioned in his speech tonight, recently rented two rooms on the first floor of the Armory, ASC Allison Building, AKA the Armory, to the Utica Center for Development. City property tax collection, I have this as of February 4th of this month. The total warrant is nine, just over nine and a half million dollars. Total paid to date, again through February 4th, is just under 7 million, or just about three quarters of the total warrant. That represents 2,774 bills, or 81% of the number of bills that we collect. The unpaid amount, about one quarter of the warrant as of that date, represents 627 bills, or about 18%. I'm sure we can get an update from Finance Director immediately at the next meeting as well. DPW has exhausted its 2025 budget for road salt. That will require a funds transfer that may be something you see come back through the Finance Committee at some point, as you may have, you know, may surmise, the number of snowfall events and frequency this winter has been higher than average. This is an issue across the state, and certainly affecting our DPW and our salt budget as well. On airport obstruction removal contracts has been approved to move ahead. Farni Tree excavation, Farni Tree and excavation is beginning work, starting this week, and that'll be completed by May 2nd. The tree clearing portion has to be completed by the end of March. That's about 12 acres of tree clearing on airport property, which those trees are considered obstructions of the plane, airport, aircraft landing and takeoff planes. And that will have minimal impacts on airport operations, but there may be some, and there will be some communications going out to adjacent landowners who will see some work going on, although this is all on airport, as opposed to being on private property. That's a project that will come. That was all I had to share tonight. Are there questions? Have you answered any of those?
Do we have questions? Go ahead.
Just a quick question about salt availability. Is there availability of across the state?
I have not heard that. We've been unable, you know, we've recently placed an order, I don't know if there's any backlog at this point.
Can we borrow their microphone?
Life's full of surprises. Great year to control a class, getting the mayor to say like that. Further questions for Greg? Okay. All right, very good. We're going to move right then into our discussion agenda with Motion Number Eight, that the Common Council approves the addition to the City of Oneonta fee schedule of an administrative fee for applications for certificates of appropriateness in the amount of $100 per application as required by City Code, Chapter 160, effective February 19th, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a motion to approve? Oh, is it, this is a motion, so it's a... Do we have a motion to approve?
So we can discuss.
So we can discuss, yes. Bring David back for this. Do I have a motion to approve? I've got Cecilia, followed by Elaine.
Len was first.
I thought you were just asking a question. So Len, followed by Cecilia. Take it that order. All right, discussion.
So the context of $100, what exactly is going into this? Because this would be in addition to a building permit. Does that... I didn't see anything with that in the notes.
Correct. This is a separate application.
Right. So this is to go before the Historic Preservation Board? They need $100? Is there time involved on city staff? So what does that look like?
I can't detail that breakdown for you, I have to get Stephen Early to advise. We did discuss this, I forget if it went through the Legislative Committee and then came to council when it was originally voted on, to create the mechanism for establishing a fee, which is what the public hearing was on tonight. I believe that the application for a planning commission is higher than this. Don't quote me, it's a 250 or 300 now. And the general justification for this being lower at 100 was that it was less of a burden on the administrative side. So exactly how the 100, $100 was arrived at, I can't speak to.
Scott?
Wasn't, part of this was the mailings? Because they got to go out, turn on a registered mail or whatever? Part of it was the mailings, I thought, was set at the last meeting.
I think one of the reasons is less.
I just have it up, so I was just going to say that. I think that we actually decided that in lieu of the mailing, they could just post, right? So I think that was part of the reason why it was lower. That's probably what you were just saying.
So the fact that they don't have to send the mailers, you know, the applicant does not have, or the city does not have to send the mailing out to everyone in a certain radius, instead the applicant just has to post something on their building, that's part of the reason the administrative burden is less, therefore the cost is less. But again, what, how exactly do they get from zero to 100? I'd have to look into that.
Right, I just want to make sure that we're covering the costs of city staff and follow.
I believe that we are.
And I also just wanted to understand, because I thought there were some times where the Historic Preservation, they would stay there, the applicant, and then there was other times where they would actually go again to the Planning Commission and go through that process. I just remember that there was like a vision in projects, so I just want the general public to understand that there's going to be costs involved, that you should get through the process, that's all. Maybe that's something we could identify on our webpage, is when people start the process. Because this is going to be a limited, a limited amount of parcels that are going to be affected by this.
Are you suggesting maybe like a flow chart, that kind of thing, to share?
Correct. So that if you have a project and you want to do something from, it's all external right now, unless it's a historic, right? Unless it's a total renovation of a historic building, which that's even limited with what we have. So yes, we have a flow chart that describes the process, so there's just clear communication.
Okay. Sure we can work on that?
Further discussion on this? Shannon? Yes?
Just a question for clarity. Was the original, was there a fee that was actually proposed that was quite higher than 100, and then this is the deduction? Is that the process that this under...
This, when the initial legislation was passed about a year ago or so, did not include anything in our ordinance or the local ordinance that allowed us to establish a fee for this. So the ordinance that we just approved the last meeting, we have a public hearing tonight, that added a section in this particular ordinance that says we can have a fee for this. Now the motion is to separate. So it had, I think this is the first time that's been proposed, so it wasn't anything higher.
Okay.
Further discussion? Yes, Kate?
Yeah, I actually, I was, I don't know. Listen, when Pink's Booty Club came on, it was like all over, so. So, yeah, okay, sorry. It had been, background track. It had been proposed to me that this may be something, and this is generally something that I support, right? The idea behind it, the intent behind it, is to protect and preserve the character of our historic neighborhoods. You know, one of the things that, just a visual example that had been given was, instead of being able to, you know, slap a two-by-four up to replace a fence railing, you have to get something that is historically sympathetic and quality materials. And I love that idea. But I think that the idea too, or a consequence of that, is that like it can be kind of cause prohibitive in time, you know, in certain times. So I just want to make sure that we're not getting into a place where we're like pricing people out of doing the renovations that we want them to do. Because if I have to choose between a two-by-four and a more expensive railing, and then I have to pay $100 on top of that, you know, that, that might make it more difficult for people to actually do the things that we want them to do. And I understand the idea behind charging a fee, but I'm wondering if maybe there's a way that we can get creative with like, you know, if you want to make a modification and, you know, it goes through the process, if, I know that some of the purpose of this was to award people like tax credits and things like that, so, you know, potentially like if you're awarded the tax credits based on successful completion of your work or something, that we could refund the $100. Just to make it, I don't know, just not an added expense, because I'm just concerned that, you know, there are commercial buildings that this will apply to, but there are also just sort of like average residential buildings that this will apply to. And we want people to be able to pour into those buildings, you know, as much as they can, and I don't want to make it an undue burden. So that's my concern, my hesitation. There's just like blanket passing of fee might actually do the opposite of what we wanted to do. And that wasn't something that I had considered until after the last meeting. So I just wanted to bring it forward as an idea.
Just a quick question for clarity. Do we know how many buildings and residences this will impact?
I, I don't know. I think...
I'm not asking.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Just maybe, this is a question for Greg, perhaps, I don't know, or Steve, or it's like early discussion.
I'm not sure the number of buildings off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Scott? So because there's a bunch of questions, will we table this motion until we bring it back at the next meeting, and we get some more questions?
Just looking at my cheat sheet to ask for that.
Go ahead.
We need to, no, go ahead, Scott, you got it.
You look at the cheat sheet, go ahead.
I put, I didn't catch what that's enough.
Would you like to second?
Yes, yes, I would like to second it to us tabling this, because I concur with a lot of the key.
We'll take, we'll take your suggestion. I'll second the motion.
Okay. All right, so it's Shannon followed by Len, you didn't actually make a motion.
I did not make the motion, she just made the motion, so we need to...
Shannon and Len are middle.
You guys are so collegiate, I see my seminar, it's kind of sifting in, that's good.
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh?
Aye.
Councilmember LaFari Shu?
Can I? I don't know what the right thing is, and I can't check quickly.
It's past, it's past the point to inter...
No, can I just ask a question about the point of clarification?
The votes have been called in the, and they're...
So you just have to...
You have to vote either gay or...
I mean, yeah.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Forster Rothbard?
Can I ask my question now, though? May I?
Don't, you don't address me, you address the chair.
Well, it's a parliamentary question. Chair, may I ask a parliamentary question?
I like, I like the fact that you love my authority that much, but it's the chair.
We did just, you know, I want to hear the question personally. So I'm going to say yes, but, you know, we did just have the whole, this is how it works.
You're the chair, you can let it go.
So I'm going to go, please, let's hear it quick.
Okay, so my question is, it's a parliamentary procedure question, which is why I looked at you. If we table it now, we have to make a motion to untable it at the next meeting, should we have perhaps instead moved to postpone, to reconsider?
The answer is, you can do whatever you want. You can lay it on the table, but laying it on the table does not foreclose the possibility of discussing the issue at a future date.
So do we have to move it back off the table at the next meeting?
Only if you choose to, you could also raise it as a new question.
Okay, got it.
So the answer, the answer is, it's laid on the table, it will sit there until it rots or is, or comes back, but you don't have to bring it up the table in order for the issue to be raised again.
Okay, thank you.
But I can get a consensus of opinion if I followed you, in the council looking to see me bring that back.
Sure. Yes.
And so by nod of heads, I would say we have a consensus of council to bring it back in a couple of weeks?
Yes.
Give people enough time to really look at the details of it?
Yeah, I mean, I would like to know the answer to the question that Cecilia posed, which is how many properties and what types of properties would this impact?
Okay. That was so parliamentary.
And actually, if there exists a map, it'd be great to see it. If there doesn't exist a map, that's not, well, it's worth city time to stop time to create it, but if there is one, there is one.
So you're taking notes in your...
It's not included in our packet.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So all of that, did you hear what he said?
Yeah.
Include it in our packet next time?
Yeah.
Okay. And he's taken those notes?
I took one.
No, you're all good, you're all good. Okay, so that motion having been tabled, but we'll see it again. Motion Number Nine, that the Common Council approves the following resolution, authorizing the city administrator to issue a letter of commitment for the Upper Susquehanna Coalition and its project partners to access city parcels for reforestation under the Core Grant Program. Whereas the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, NYSDEC, has established the Community Reforestation, CORV, Core Grants Program to fund restoration initiatives in urban areas, and whereas the City of Oneonta has identified two city-owned parcels, tax maps numbers 275.00-1-27.01 and 258.00-2-1.00, located on East Street in the town of Oneonta, within the City of Oneonta's lower reservoir watershed, as suitable sites for reforestation under this program. And whereas the proposed reforestation effort aligns with the Common Council's strategic priorities, specifically in the areas of sustainability and natural environment, which include fostering appreciation for the natural surroundings, encouraging conservation, and prioritizing sustainable operations and environmental stewardship. And whereas the project will contribute to the goals of the Chesapeake Bay Watershed Implementation Plan and the New York State Governor's 25 Million Trees Initiative by increasing urban tree canopy, improving water and air quality, mitigating heat islands, enhancing biodiversity, and reducing stormwater runoff, and sequestering carbon. And whereas the Upper Susquehanna Coalition, USC, in partnership with the Oscego County Soil and Water Conservation District, SWCD, intends to apply for grant funding from the NYSDEC Core Program, with all associated costs covered by the grant, and the City of Oneonta providing in-kind services through periodic maintenance of the newly planted trees. And whereas the city's role in this project includes permitting access to the identified parcels for USC, its contractors, and SWCD to conduct necessary reforestation activities, including site preparation, tree planting, and ongoing monitoring in accordance with the grant requirements. And whereas, as part of the application process, USC requires a formal commitment from the City of Oneonta, allowing access to the identified parcels for the implementation of the proposed reforestation plan. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city administrator is hereby authorized and empowered to submit a letter of commitment to the Upper Susquehanna Coalition, USC, granting permission for USC, its contractors, and the Oscego County Soil and Water Conservation District, SWCD, to access the identified city-owned parcels for the purposes of implementing reforestation activities under the NYSDEC Community Reforestation Core Grant Program. And it is further resolved that this resolution shall serve as a formal acknowledgement of the city's support for the reforestation project and the Common Council's commitment to the environment and sustainability goals outlined herein. And it is further resolved that upon approval of the grant application, the city administrator is further authorized to execute any necessary agreements, permits, or other documents required to facilitate the implementation of the project and ensure compliance with grant requirements.
So moved.
Katie, followed by Elaine. It's been like a 40-minute speech.
Yeah.
Anyway, anyway, moving on, discussion. Can you read that again? Yes?
Can I just ask, so this was put on the discussion agenda rather than the consent agenda, what were the hesitations or anything identified in the meeting?
Um, weren't necessarily hesitations, it was just more to have us discuss, you know, the terms of disagreement.
Okay.
If we needed to.
And also to give the mayor a chance to read this very...
Further discussion?
I do have some questions that Craig, maybe you can answer. Do you know any more at this point about the, some of the stuff we talked about last week, the diversity of trees that are planned, or what the long-term plan is for, for the sites?
Long-term plan, I mean, this is, this is it, essentially, reforestation. Now, we've talked in the past about trails that may or may not already be, you know, on those parcels. I think that would still be a functional use of the parcels, potentially in the future. But as far as long-term, really, reforestation, you know, this is going to take decades before, you know, to the point where there's any logging that would even be suggested, that would be well beyond my career everything. So between now and then, really just letting the trees grow. Now, the maintenance that's recommended there, that is referenced in the resolution, is the city mowing between the trees for the first few years, you know, once or twice a season. This is an area, both these areas are parcels that we brush hog once a year now. Our airport maintenance mechanic actually does have the DPW come down and use it to brush off the airport. So something similar to that would continue for the next several years until the trees really take place, the canopy develops, and then nature takes over. The diversity, I did see, I don't have it in front of me, I did see some emails back and forth with the Soil and Water Conservation District, talking about different types of species they look at. That hasn't been determined yet, but it would be, you know, native species, some biodiversity there, I'm not sure exactly how many each. They did say 100 to 500 trees planted per acre. I think they're probably leaning toward the higher end, because they're talking about planting bare root trees as opposed to anything larger. But I think those details will still have to work out for an application that they're still working on.
Okay. So...
So, I mean, I partly was thinking long-term, so, I mean, all this, this resolution talks about, you know, water quality and sustainability and air and stuff, but it would be treated like other city parcels, I mean, yes, it's fifty years from now, but that it would be eventually logged as part of. That's the concept, okay. And, um, I remember you said something about that the whole area might need to get fenced, or individual trees would have to have the columns, what?
The grant allows for, you know, using tree stakes, you know, to protect the trees from gear and other damage that might happen. I think those are recommended as opposed to fencing the whole area.
Okay.
Easier to, and then those just get cut off after five, ten years.
Okay, thanks, that, that's what I understand.
Greg, so Greg, I was good on all those details except for it says up to fifty acres, do we know more exactly how many acres we're talking about?
Uh, the exact number, I have to calculate or look that up, but I don't have it in front of me.
It is forty-nine and a half acres.
Oh, is it going right up to fifty acres?
Well, at least the parts that are marked on the map add up to forty-nine acres, forty-nine, forty-nine and a half.
That's right, there is a map attached. Thanks.
Mike, can you send it into council, the map?
Uh, it was actually attached.
It's page twenty-five. I guess I did screw it.
It's in the finance notes packet.
Okay, thank you.
Is everyone familiar with generally where these parcels are? Just to, they're, they're in the town of Oneonta, but you know, when you go past Long East Street, the reservoir, well reservoir's on your right, they'll be on the left side.
Okay.
Have we any further discussion?
Just one last thing, um, I know when we were talking about trails, we were talking about that entrance to that property is a possible public parking area, so just when you guys are working out the site design, just keep that in mind.
Sure, like a trailhead?
Like a, yeah, trailhead parking area.
Alright, if there's no further discussion, if there is, we'll take a motion.
Councilmember Moshe Kupoli.
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo.
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh.
Aye.
Councilmember LaFari Shu.
Aye.
Councilmember Carson.
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington.
Yes.
Councilmember Forser Rothbart.
Yes, I do actually support five thousand or three thousand new trees.
Alright, um, we'll go to motion number ten, that the common council adopts the take-home vehicle use policy as presented in place of the current vehicle use policy previously adopted on February fifteenth, twenty-eleven, whom I have motion to approve. I've got Cecilia, followed by Shannon, and discussion on this? Have we any discussion on this? Yes?
Just to provide more context for this motion, the take-home vehicle use policy that's given to you is far more extensive than our previous conversation, so I wanted to open, we as a committee wanted to have this opened up to the council.
We also had GPS for all our vehicles, for insurance purposes and accountability and stuff, so.
I have a question.
Yes.
The GPS, so I take it we don't have GPS on all of our vehicles yet, is that the case?
Correct.
Sounds like, because I, I listened in, and so it sounds like some, but not all, so, um, this would be the plan to then put them in all of the vehicles, right?
Uh, I would say all appropriate vehicles, there are certain equipment, heavy equipment, that kind of thing, like an excavator. Um, but yes, these vehicles, anything that's, that's going outside of the city or going home, I think it makes sense to add to.
Okay, and then there's some insurance advantage too, it sounds like, along with GPS, is that correct? Or there was something related to insurance?
Depends, depends which one they get, but sometimes you can get the ones who will actually come on your brakes or speed. Uh, emergency vehicles cases, if they have their lights and sirens on and stuff like that, so there are some advantages to, depending which one we get, I don't know what the city already has, and I'm not recommending go out and rig you the whole system.
Right.
At least put them in there for accountability, and that way if there's ever a complaint or something like that, or if we want data on how much it's costing us in the future for take-home cars or something like that.
I mean, strike me for, you know, like, employee use purposes, use the GPS, it's kind of more common, and I know for, for vehicles, I just wanted to get more information about what we were looking at for that.
Have we further discussion?
No, I think we're done.
Okay, councilmember Moshe Kupoli.
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo.
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh.
Aye.
Councilmember LaFari Shu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carson.
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington.
Yes.
Councilmember Forser Rothbart.
Yes.
They start pretty well. Alright, uh, we wanted to have a discussion on the proposed occupancy tax, you heard me reference it in, um, my remarks, uh, and so this has already gone in front of Finance and HR, and Cecilia, if you don't mind kind of taking the lead, would you mind kind of explaining to folks what we're looking at? Are you alright with that, or?
Uh.
I mean, it's, it's in everybody's packet, everybody knows what this is.
Sure.
But I guess maybe more for the benefit of people.
Oh, oh, sure, so, uh, the discussion focuses on the revelation that, uh, the city is now eligible to, um, have available a six percent occupancy tax for not just hotels, but also for, you would call Airbnb, bookings.com, Verbo, uh, and what was really helpful in our discussion and the Finance and HR Committee was the fact that, uh, the city administrator provided for us a comparison, uh, with other cities, so that the current, uh, rate that the Atsico County, uh, occupancy tax, uh, charges is six percent, and so we were able to compare Atsico County, uh, with other cities and counties similar in size, uh, to Oneonta, uh, to see both what the, the rates were, uh, for cities and county, as well as, um, where the funds were appropriated. So we, um, we had, I thought, a really helpful discussion, and I wanted to open it up to the council, I don't know if there's anything, Greg, that you wanted to add to that, the comparisons?
Sure, yeah, I'll, I'll jump in. Just take what I've read. Alright, so, um, many counties, um, already have an occupancy tax, and, um, some cities within those counties have occupancy taxes. The governor has kind of leveled the playing field a bit to make certain that, um, Verbo and Airbnb and all those others are inclusive. One of the values of, um, of a potential partnership of sorts with the county discussions that we've already had with the county, is that in the city, if we can determine all of those potential payers of an occupancy tax, we're likely to be expanding the numbers from whom the county is collecting their occupancy tax. So, that's kind of what we take on, and then potentially then what we have is a partnership with the county, still to be, um, agreed upon, but in handshake, we're looking at the county essentially being the bookkeeper and cutting us, that so they would do the collection, they would then cut us a check, quote-unquote, check for our percentage that we have charged. We don't have to charge six percent, we can charge four percent, we can charge a hundred percent, you know, we can charge whatever we want, but what we've seen in comparison of these other communities, is that they're kind of landing where their counties stand. And our county hits a six percent, and it seems like a reasonable bet. We can extrapolate from what the county already collects, that we might see four hundred thousand dollars on a yearly basis, just based on what we know now. So, if I missed it, did I?
No, I think that generally covered it. Um, I think as Cecilia mentioned, there's a table included in the packet, it's color-coded, that shows those different counties, that have cities within them that also charge an occupancy tax. Um, there are a number of other municipalities across the state, if you follow the link, you can, you can look them up yourself, obviously I didn't list them all on this table, there's just some examples of where there's a local city within a county and the county itself that charge occupancy taxes. Um, it also lists how they use their revenues, that's listed right in the state enabling legislation, uh, which just maybe you actually clarified the process, so if the city decided they wanted to go forward with this, uh, the mayor would have to reach out to our state representatives, the assembly and the senate, and ask them to draft, uh, state legislation that would enable the city to then pass its own local law to establish this occupancy tax, so that would take a number of months, whatever the state's process may take, um, followed by our local law process.
So, so let's have some discussion, this, you know, Finance wanted to put this in front of council board discussion, anybody got any thoughts on it, would you like to share?
Sure, so we, we have a couple hotels, a couple motels, well, how many units are we talking about within that demographic? How many units are we talking about outside of that demographic?
I don't have the detailed breakdown from Allen Ruffles, the county, twenty-twenty-three, the county collected just under four hundred thousand dollars from city properties, uh, for the occupancy tax that the county collects, that was on four E2 properties, so subtract the handful of hotels and motels, that would tell you that the rest of them are, are short-term rentals, Airbnb types of properties. Now, are there more that did not, they were not collecting from because the laws were different, and it could be, that could be increased in the future, uh, but I'm not sure. So far, in twenty-twenty-four, I think I had data through October, uh, it looked like the total amount was similar, maybe a little bit higher, it's allowed now.
You're doing it, okay. Not you, but it's competition.
Um, and I think that it's still the same number, forty-two properties. As the mayor referenced, with the code enforcement office and the city working with the county, as they already do, to identify what properties are registered as short-remittals in the city, the county should be collecting occupancy tax from those, if the city had occupancy tax, it'd be the same thing, uh, we've worked together to make sure the registry that we're using is the same, and maximizing the collection, not letting anyone get right now.
So, just, I want to, just put the question out, does anybody think it's a bad idea?
I believe we spend the rules. No. Okay.
Scott?
Um, I'm not sure it's a bad idea, I'm not sure, in the finance, I said I was on the fence with it, I didn't think it was bad, I think it was good. I think there's some things to take into consideration, worry about, because you don't want to put too much on, we're gonna hurt, um, the businesses, um, make them so they're not gonna be able to be compatible to maybe like another jurisdiction like Milford, which is pretty close, or, you know, Hartwick on the other side, um, which are a travel distance. Just some stuff to think about, I didn't know if those six, six percent might be the right number, I think that's one of the reasons why I wanted up here, with, you know, what I was talking here, is maybe we can always start out lower, we can always bring it up, but, you know.
Every time, you can't change it except by legislation.
Right.
So, if you, you'd have to start at a level, and then get another, get the New York State Legislature, like, governor, you can't.
We can't hear, sorry. Point out the person.
What I was saying is, is it, you can't, we don't get a, we don't get a blanket authorization to establish it, then raise it, mow it, whatever we feel like, and then every step, the, the way we have to go through another year process of going to legislature and getting permission to change it.
Right, okay, so we have to decide.
And Scott, I couldn't hear.
No, you don't decide.
Oh, I have to raise my hand.
Yes, go ahead.
I couldn't fully hear you, but I just want to say that, you know, as somebody who utilizes these services in other states, right, in other places, the cost gets pushed, like, onto me as the user of the property, so I always pay like the extra tax amount or whatever, so the owner's not getting stuck with that, the person who's, you know, utilizing the service.
Right, that's what I'm saying, was like, you can make it so you're not competitive, because if I want to go stay at this Airbnb, and I'm gonna be paying, say, I don't know, a hundred dollars a night, you know, whatever the price is, and then I got six percent from the county, six percent from the city, that's an extra twelve percent in there, but I could go maybe just over the line, and I'm only paying six percent, and it's, so I'm cheaper there, and I'm saving money, that's all I was saying is, you know, it may not be, that's just a concern, is are we gonna make it so they're not competitive?
And that's, I'm gonna just jump in quick on that, go to you Cecilia.
Well, I can actually just, if, okay.
No, go ahead. Okay, it's related, but it's not critical either.
Okay, I just had a quick question then for Greg, because I believe in our conversation we talked about the town of Oneonta also having access to this, or no?
Not yet, they could, any, any municipality in the county could implement a similar, but that would be up to that.
So your scenario could, I was just gonna say, your scenario could actually unfold that potentially.
I think in my, I think in my experience and how I see this playing out, I don't, I think the chances or the opportunity for that to happen are very small. We have people who come here, and the reason they're coming here is because they're visiting, their parents who are visiting at the schools, they're going to the camps, you know, and for a lot of them, convenience is key, so staying near where they're going is what's most, more important to them, they're also generally from like bigger places and used to paying these things, I mean, the other thing is, because it's applied uniformly to like all Airbnbs and all hotels, it's just part of like doing business and staying here, so like when I travel, every hotel I look at in Philadelphia has eighteen percent occupancy tax, so I mean, you know, it's, it's every single one, so it doesn't unfairly, I mean, except in the example that you gave, which is like across the county line, but, or I guess in the town, you know, and that may be something that we want to partner with them on to make sure that it doesn't, that it benefits all of us.
Want to go to Elaine?
Yeah, I agree that, you know, some partnering with other municipalities, uh, would, would always be a good idea, um, and one of the things that I learned about reading this, or maybe listening to the, the meeting, I can't remember which one, um, the, you know, the impact that that can have in defraying those emergency services and other services that the city is providing, that people who are visiting are utilizing potentially, um, and I know that one of the council's, um, you know, drives is to try to make sure that we're, you know, um, funding all of those services as best as we can, so I, I, you know, think that this is something that we should move forward with.
Yes, Scott?
I'm not saying we should move forward, I'm just saying we need to look at the, what percentage is really what I'm concerned about, is like where, where do we go percentage-wise, so that we don't work still competitive, and that's all my concern, let me go to Elaine.
Uh, I agree with what I'm hearing here, that I think, I mean, we can only politely ask, but we politely ask the town to consider matching, doing matching residency tax, um, occupancy tax. I want to raise a different concern, which is, I'm not clear on how short-term rentals are defined, and I want to make sure we don't incidentally, uh, add taxes to anything like the, like the, I forget what it's called, but like the, uh, long-term hotels, we know where people are, you know, or like where people who are otherwise unhoused or in, for a longer term in a hotel, I don't want to add any extra expense in those cases, so I'd want to make sure we craft it in such a way that that wasn't an issue.
I want to write the New York State website and write about the occupancy law, and, um, I think it's at thirty days, if, you know, if somebody's staying for thirty days or more, then the occupancy tax does not apply.
Also, in, in our city, it's anything over fourteen days, right?
It's no longer defined, so anything under fifteen days is defined as a short-term rental,
so anything over that would be, right? I believe that's right in the code? I'll hold up.
Cecilia?
So I just wanted to actually just draw everybody's attention, I know you probably don't have the, uh, comparisons, that, that chart necessarily directly in front of you, but just to note that one of the points I think that we discussed is the fact, to Scott's point, that Atsico County now currently, currently has a six percent, uh, tax. When you look at the comparison, that's actually on the higher side, that most hover around, yeah, three, two, three percent, maybe four, uh, so just to kind of throw that out there as, you know, where we would reside in relation to these other cities.
So, one of the things that we will need to do in any case, is we'll need to connect with our state legislators and governors' offices, et cetera, et cetera, in, um, in pursuit of our being able to actually have this. of our being able to actually have this bill as a, I'm getting confused, uh, that we can then take to, I guess, with the legislator, um, to hammer out the details on. So I guess the, the question here for the council is, is this something that we feel at least we should take to the next logical step? And then, but guess, go ahead.
I'm in favor of moving this forward, but I think there's some details that are missing, because as Cecilia just pointed out, I'm in agreement, I'm concerned that if you go too high, you will push business to the town, so I think we need to talk to the town of Oneonta to see if they're on board of promoting an occupancy tax, and also I'd like to have a conversation with the hotels and motels, and see what their perspective is, they might be able to provide some insight on what the market will demand, I don't know.
Well, certainly I think the town, we can have a conversation with before the next time this council gets together, if you want to continue the discussion, I don't, you know, this is not something that we need to make a decision about tonight, but I, I can at the very least have a conversation with the town and see what their strategies are, and that might take care of one of the concerns about pushing people across the border to, you know, someplace that might be five or six percent cheaper, we're just not, you know, not, you know, it's a reasonable consideration.
Because it's also about amenities.
Yeah, all right, so shall we just continue, shall we continue? Yes, go ahead.
Uh, one last question, I guess for you, Mayor, I saw the discussion about how the, the revenue would be allotted, did you have thoughts about that, or had you had discussions?
My personal thought, for what that's worth, is that it's simply something that goes to the general fund, we can always come back to that at some later time and say we'd like to divvy it up in a different way, but right now, as, as you heard, one of the things that we want to do is we want to be investing, but not creating a hole, we need to fill, backfill into our general fund.
Just to, David, this is the last comment, that the timeframe for this is not, would it actually be quite lengthy, given that this involves the New York State? So we're looking at twenty-twenty-six?
Potentially, we're looking at their calendar, might be the end of twenty-twenty-five, but we're looking at their calendar.
Just to, to clarify that.
Yes, that's a good, all right, so, yes?
Sorry, I just wanted to say, because I, I spoke confidently before about the short-term rentals being fifteen days, and I think that that may have been in the legislation that we repealed and replaced with the new, so I just wanted to clarify that I don't think that that's correct anymore, and, um, so an answer for that question would be great. Thank you.
I will have a conversation with the town, we'll, Greg and I expect both have that conversation with the town, we'll find out what their inclination is, that's gonna answer some questions, I can have some conversations with some of the hotel management and get their sense of it, but if, if I, I think I might know what their sense of this, but it's worth asking, and then we'll, we'll reinvest in this conversation, okay? Sound good? Okay, um, with that, we'll move to additional business and council consideration, I know Elaine, you've got something?
Yes. I would like to take a moment to honor the memory of Sam Nordquist. News of his tragic murder near Canadagua created ripples of shockwaves through upstate New York, and especially in the LGBTQIA+ community. We condemn this horrific act of violence and assert that there is no justification for mistreatment of anyone, anywhere. For Sam's family and friends who are grieving, our community shares compassion and the hope for justice that will bring some peace. From our city code, the purpose of the Commission on Community Relations and Human Rights reads, "The common council of the city of Oneonta finds that neighborliness and good community relations are one of a city's greatest assets, that prejudice and discrimination against any individual or group menace peace or public welfare, and that promoting tolerance and celebration of diversity is a worthy goal of the city of Oneonta. I also serve on the New York State Division of Human Rights Hate and Bias Prevention Unit. We currently have a Call Out Hate campaign, and I invite you to report any instances by calling our toll-free hotline at 1-844-NO-2-HATE, but in case of immediate risk or harm, always call emergency services first. Every person deserves to live with dignity and respect, and no one should be treated with cruelty and harm. Atsico Pride Alliance has planned a vigil this Sunday to honor Sam and comfort the communities he impacted through the vibrancy of his life. Rest in power, Sam, thank you."
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Do I have anybody else that has aiming for council consideration?
I just want to add that I've been thinking about this a lot, Elaine, thank you for saying something, and I feel like now is a time when Oneonta really has to think about how we can actually actively be a welcoming community to many different, to any group, like any subgroup, and Mayor, I really appreciated your remarks tonight about that, but I feel like it's time to, to go beyond, you know, making a nice statement and thinking, how can we actively, like, I don't, I don't know what the answer to the question is, but how can we actively let people know that they're welcome here no matter who they are, and ensure that there's not violence done against people in our community? I had a conversation with some high school students who expressed to me that they don't, that what's going on at the federal level makes them feel unwelcome, and anything we can do to tell them, yes, that they actually are welcome in our, in our town, in our city, is important. Likewise, I know there are some Hartwick students, some international students, who have been made nervous by what's going on at the federal level, and, I don't know, I just, I put it out there as something that we need to think about, I, because I, I don't know what we can do, but I feel like we should do something.
All right, if we have nothing else for council consideration, and we have no additional business, and there's no need, we'll be for an executive session. Then I'm gonna thank you all for your patience, and this meeting is adjourned.